Okay, I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, November 25th, 2025. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krueger.
Here.
And trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Comments from the public. During the public comment period pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.8 for parent two, individuals must state their name and address. Comments are limited to items not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named. The board's role is to listen and receive information from the public, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment about anything not on tonight's agenda? Anybody? Oh, please come up. State your name and address for the record, please.
Outstanding. Good. I'm Stefan Zeke Probelski. I'm the District 21 County Board Supervisor. Just wanted to introduce myself to everyone. I gave everybody a card to give you a little bit, let everybody know who I am. I'm on the supervisory committee. I'm in charge, not in charge, but I'm on the Planning, Development, and Transportation Committee. We oversee the Port Authority, which has a few hot-button item issues, as you probably know. I also oversee the Airport Committee, the Highway Department, Facilities Department, or a few other departments along the way. We also, I'm also on the Land Conservation Committee, and we have a department that keeps us very much informed on all the latest agricultural issues and all things agricultural. So I just wanted to introduce myself and let everybody know who I am. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have any comments about items not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to written communications or announcements. Eight, six A. Oath of Office for New Public Safety Officer. Chief.
Madam President, thank you. Village Board, thank you, as always, for allowing us to take the time to introduce a new officer as well as have him recite the oath of office for us. So at this time, I'm going to ask our new officer, Alec Pearson, to step up, stand over here. We got to, I got to give a little disclaimer here for Alec because last night Alec started his shift at 7:00 AM, or 7:00 PM, excuse me, and I don't know if it was on the news as much, but there was an incident that occurred that kept Alex up past his time of 3:00 AM, past 7:00 AM when I came in this morning, and I saw him working on the computer, and then it was about 9:00, 9:30, I think he might have left to go home to try to get some sleep. At that time, because of the incident that occurred last night, he was called a couple hours later while trying to get some sleep to give some details about that that was needed for that. So Alec is learning early on of the job and what it takes to be dedicated and welcome to the family, my friend. So I want to give a little bit of an introduction for Alec. Alec did attend Ashwabanan High School. Alec joined the United States Army National Guard to train and become a military police officer. Alec was assigned the Joint Task Force Guantanamo in Guantanamo Bay. He was in there for five months. Alec, at that time, returned from Cuba in 2017 where he was hired as a correctional officer with the Brown County Sheriff's Department. Alec was then hired by our department in 2024, attended NWTC Law Enforcement Academy. He graduated in May of 2025. His academy classmates chose him for the backup award, and I want to explain what the backup award is. That's considered the person whose character and competence you trust completely, as your life and the lives of others may depend on their actions. So to receive that type of award is pretty prestigious, and we certainly congratulate him and certainly wish him the best for that. So before I give this oath to you and ask you to recite it to us, Alec, one thing I want you to remember is that you have your family, your friend, and your support right here in front. They're always going to be there for you. You have a huge family right back here that you've always got to remember. They're always there for you. And I'm going to want you to take a look at this board because I can't thank you enough for what you do for our department and what you and how you support our officers. So thank you. Remember that when you're out in that community, serving and protecting them, okay? Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'm actually going to grab another microphone here because I want them to hear you. No singing now, okay? This isn't karaoke.
Okay, sounds good.
Are you ready?
Yes.
I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Alec Pearson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will swear to protect. Semi.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
There you go. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
To the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
And without purpose of evasion.
And without purpose of evasion.
And I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully, and charges the duties.
Of the Office of Public Safety Officer.
Of the Office of Public Safety Officer.
For the Village of Ashwabanan.
For the Village of Ashwabanan.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
But this time, Nicole.
Introduce Nicole. Nicole is Alec's fiancee. She's going to pin on his badge carefully. Nice. Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alec. Welcome, Alec. Okay, we now have six B, a presentation, the update on the Ashwabanan Performing Arts Center with Kate Williams of the Ashwabanan School District.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for the time and the opportunity to present to you guys. It's always fun for me to do this, just to do a little recap for everybody on what's been going on for the last year. We continue to experience increased enjoyment of the Performing Arts Center, welcoming more than 46,000 audience members and thousands more performers through our doors this past season. I did share last season's financials with you in advance, so I'm not going to read them back to you, but I would like to point out a few things that are not already covered in that legend that I provided. First is the general sponsorship receipts line reflects just that, general sponsorships, not otherwise allocated to something specific. So in total, last season's fundraising garnered nearly $52,000 in donations of support for shows and projects. Second, last year was the first season since COVID to reflect net revenues less than net expenses. That said, last year was also the first year we invested in onboarding a new staff member, and we experienced a $20,000 reduction in our district tax levy, which is a one-time reduction. You are also provided with two income statements, and the reason for that is the intent to show, one, the total operating costs for full-venue operations, and then, two, the operating income from performances or non-school usages that offset those full-venue operating costs. The very existence of the PAC has innate expenses related to it, and the non-school usages are what allow for revenues to offset those expenses. So again, I didn't want to read that all back to you, but I wanted to point out those few things. Were there any questions related to those financials?
Kate, the purchases services, is, I would assume that's just the different acts for people coming in. Is that what that is?
It is. Purchase services would be the artist fees. It would also be any outside labor that we needed to hire and to support those events. Anything else? Okay. We know that the center is inherently important to serving both the school district and the community, and you may recall, we made a plan a few years ago to better balance the school versus non-school usage of the venue. Three years ago, school usages had crept up to 74% of all venue usage time. By meeting with district users, we developed a priority use plan that allowed us to better accommodate all performing arts user groups while also better balancing the calendar. Two years ago, we were able to make initial progress on this, and this past season, school usage of the venue was at 62%, which is a great improvement. It allows us for 38% of the venue usage to be used by the community. And the reason that number is important is for two reasons. One, when the venue was approved for, by, through district referendum, it was promised to serve both the school district and the community members equally. And two, those non-school usages, that 38%, that's what makes up 100% of the earned revenue for the venue. So that's why I like to point out those two figures. You know, it's quite remarkable that the Performing Arts Center we have is able to offer so much, both in revenue, both in venue assets and educational opportunities for Ashwabanan students, residents, and the community at large, without also being a 100% financial expense to the school district or village. In fact, we've been able to add support staff, program, and fundraise nine successful seasons of events, grow a fund balance, allowing for long-term stability and reinvestment into the center, and welcome more than 300,000 people through its doors. As the center enters its 10th year of life next fall already, I've been making plans for reinvesting in the long-term maintenance, upkeep, and upgrades for the venue. Nine years of operations have shown us areas of need, and a comprehensive long-term list of those needs is in continual production. While currently in a silent phase of fundraising, I'm proud to say the community members have already pledged more than $150,000 in private donations to support our reinvestment in the venue. Some elements that were not included in the original construction of the venue are now being added. Some electronic equipment has become outdated over a decade of life and is in need of repair and a replacement. I like to equate that, too. I bet many of you have had more than one cell phone in the last 10 years, so imagine that on a thousand times that scale. It feels good to know that community members value the venue so much as to share their resources to keep it thriving. This year, we also welcomed three new members to our volunteer community advisory board, and all are excited to help support the PAC into its future. And the more fun things that I get to share are some of the great events coming up. It's a busy time of year. Right now, we've got the Ashwabanan High School Musical, Once Upon a One More Time, is performing. There's three more performances on Friday and Saturday and Sunday of this coming weekend. We have John McGivern's Holiday Tales on December 2nd, Parkview Band and Choir, December 8th and 9th, Hollow at the Holly, December 10th, Ashwabanan High School Band, December 16th, Christmas with the Knights on Broadway, December 17th, and a local production of The Nutcracker on December 19th, 20th, and 21st, just in time to take a little break for the holidays. So, thank you. Do you have any questions about any of those updates?
Kate, the money that comes in for the high school musical that you just mentioned, does that just go right into your coffers, or does that go back to the school?
It stays with the school. It does not stay with the PAC.
Okay.
When you rented Kate to, like, the dance studios and stuff, does that money go into?
That stays with the PAC.
That stays with PAC, okay.
So rental revenues would stay with the venue.
There are a lot of people that go to dance recitals. I live right across from the high school PAC, and there's a lot of people.
There are a lot of people. I say it every year, but it stands true. If we could, we could have built a second venue, and it would still be full. So there's a long waitlist, and that's a great credit to the space that all of you put together and made happen for the village, yeah.
Kate, I just want to thank you for your leadership at the PAC and all the programming you have. It's great. That facility is used and used well, and you have some really nice programs and activities coming in there. So good job. To you and your staff, too.
Thank you.
It is a great amenity for the village. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you, Kate.
Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, I have one announcement. I just want everybody to know that this is the week of a holiday. So the garbage pickup, Thursday's garbage pickup will be on Wednesday, tomorrow. Friday's garbage pickup will be on Monday. So just so anybody watching this meeting is aware that we're changing the garbage pickup. That's a hot topic when we have a holiday. So, anyway.
Is this the first Thanksgiving we ever had?
No, it's not.
Change the schedule?
No, but I just like to remind people because when people's garbage doesn't get picked up, unfortunately, we have some very wonderful people that work here that have to take some really bad phone calls.
I'd have to think back, Carrie, but it might be the first one on a Thursday?
I think that is it, Jake, on a Thursday. Okay, moving on. Number seven, public hearing. Public hearing on the 2026 Village of Ashwabanan proposed budget. Okay, before we start any budget things, I just would, again, like to point out, I pointed this out at the last budget meeting two weeks ago with the joint finance. I want to thank all the department heads. Especially Joel and Greg and I had so many meetings, they probably got sick of seeing me. They saw me so much in meetings. They did a wonderful job. And then we had three department heads that were asked to take a little bit more, shave a little bit more off the top of their, their expenses so that we could get down to a better percentage, and they did a wonderful job. Thank you. It was our three largest departments. It was tough for them to do, but they did it. So I think, I think everybody will be happy with this budget. We had a lot of increased costs with the pending things that we've signed. So anyway, or we're signing. So anyway, yeah. So Joel, I'll let you take it from here. And Greg?
Sure. Greg, you want to go?
Sure.
Go for it.
Sure. So this is just the public hearing on the, on the budget. So as, as President Kardowski just mentioned, we met on November 11th, the Joint Village Board, Village Finance Personnel Committee, to review and discuss the budget in detail. And from there, it was recommended to prove as was. There were no modifications made, no changes. It's a balanced budget. Revenues expenditures are $21,626,238 on the general fund. Results in a mill rate of 5.03, which is up 10 cents from last year. The levy is up one, just over $1 million. The tax rate's up less than 2%. However, the overall tax rate, when you put into the, everything, all the other jurisdictions, will actually go down for, for the taxpayers, residents of Ashwabanan, to the tune of about 4 cents total for Ashwabanan School District. West Apier, they're down about 17 cents in total. That's their total tax rate. So all that we were able to achieve and accomplish, we did not reduce any services, reduce any headcount. We are able to continue with maintenance projects, road projects, and the like, to keep moving forward like Ashwabanan always does. And we feel this is a strong, healthy budget that will set us up well for the future as well.
Okay. Okay, does anybody, well, we, it's a public hearing, so anybody in the media or the, out in the audience want to comment on the budget? Anybody want to comment on the budget? Hearing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close? Second.
Motion and a second to close a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Number eight, action on the consent agenda. Eight A, consider, discuss, act on the open and closed session minutes of the October 28, 2025 village board meeting. B, receive and accept the general fund financial reports as of 11/19/2025. C, receive and accept the October 2025 investment report. D, consider, discuss, act on a Class B beer, Class C wine license request for Pizza 79, Inc., DBA Mountain Mike's Pizza. E, consider, discuss, act on change of agent, Chris, Chris Oil Company, DBA Chris Food Mart, number 87, Bernard Davis. F, consider, discuss, act on the budgeted expenditures for periods between 10/24/2025 to 11/19/2025. G, receive and accept the November 2023 Public Works Department report. And H, receive and accept the state required 2024 housing fee and housing affordability reports. Does anybody want anything pulled, or we can?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, number nine, ordinances and/or resolutions. Nine A, consider, discuss, act on resolution R 11-1-25, authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed 3.195 million general obligation promissory notes. Greg?
Yes. Brad V. Gut from RW Baird is here to discuss the process with the issuing of this debt issue, but I'll give you just some brief points on it. What we want to do is take care of some, some needs that we have in the village. This issue would be specifically for the garage, Public Works Garage roof replacement, which needs to be done. The Marina walkway repairs that are, that has to complex over by, at the lake, or, excuse me, at the Marina, and then some vehicle purchases, the garbage truck, and two dump trucks, and the stormwater utility for Willard Pond Construction and Ashwabanan Street culvert replacement. All of these items were in the budget, improved and discussed in the budget, and this would just be the financing for those projects next year. So I'll let Brad.
Okay, I'll walk through the presentation that was included in your packet. This sort of details the process that's being recommended. So with the board's action tonight, what you're considering is what's called the parameters resolution. So it's a resolution that would authorize the borrowing as long as a narrow set of parameters are met, and I'll walk through those briefly. The final, the authority for final sign-off on the sale of the notes, that's finalizing the rates and the terms of the notes, would be delegated to the village president and the village clerk. So with the adoption of this resolution, Baird, along with village staff, will continue to take steps to bring the issuance to market. We'll prepare the official statement. That's a disclosure document. We'll secure a bond rating from Moody's, and then Baird would market these obligations to investors nationwide. We expect to finalize the issuance on December 9th, and the closing would be scheduled for December 30th. So in terms of a summary of the issuance, Greg talked about the various purposes. These are general obligation promissory notes. That means the village is pledging its taxing authority for the repayment of the debt. That's the security that the investors are going to look, look to. It's a 10-year obligation with the first call feature in June 1st of 2032. So on that day or any business day thereafter, the village could prepay this debt with available funds or refinance if interest rates are lower. The estimated rate is 3.35%. I'm being a little bit conservative on that. Rates today would be closer to about 3.1%. But regardless, on the 9th, we'll get the lowest rates available in the market. So 3.35 is really here just for planning purposes. Now, on the bottom of this page, there's an outline of the parameters that are included in the resolution. Those parameters include a not-to-exceed borrowing amount. I mentioned the authority for final sign-off. There's a maximum interest rate of 4.25%, and then the maturity schedule and the authority to adjust individual principal payments by up to $300,000. And we would do that just to meet the debt structure that the village is targeting. On the following pages here, I've got some detailed schedules that outline the repayment of the, the notes. The first page, or it's page three of this presentation, outlines the, the split between general fund supported debt service and the debt service that's supported by stormwater system revenues. So in total, about $1.7 million of debt service is stormwater-related, 2.19 roughly is general fund-related. And then on page four, I split these into, into the two components. So you see the general fund piece of, is $1.795 million. What I'd point out, if you look at the right-hand side of this page, is that the combined debt service, so that's your existing obligations plus this new issue, we, we're budgeting $2.113 million for payments in 2026, and then I'm showing a drop in debt service payments. Now, presumably, next year at this time, if you issue another note for capital projects, that gives us some space to fill in that, that drop in debt service, so we can avoid a big spike in your debt service schedule. And then the last page, I do the same exercise for the stormwater revenue system, just to give an indication what the debt service looks like for that utility. So I can go into more detail if you like or answer questions, but again, the plan is to have this finalized and closed before year end.
Okay. Hopefully, the cost of some of these vehicles goes down, so we don't have to keep borrowing, huh, to, to purchase them? Wishful thinking. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution R 11-1-25, authorizing the issuance and establishing the parameters for the sale of not to exceed 3.195 million general obligation promissory notes. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R 11-1-25. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Brad. Okay, nine B, consider, discuss, act on resolution R 11-2-25, R 11-3-25, and R 11-4-25, increases to water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater rates. Well, these are the ones we've been talking about, right, Brian?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
So you guys may recall, last month at village board, we had presented this topic. This is kind of something to start mulling over because it does have such great impacts to a residency or at the village. As, as you may be aware, our, our water utility is purchasing water currently. We, we have been for 10, 15 years plus from Green Bay Water. It is regulated, our water is regulated by the Public Service Commission. Based on upcoming projects, when we were working with Rooker Milky, they put together a long-range cash flow, and they had advised that we should apply for a simplified rate case here in 2026. So that process does go through the Public Service Commission. It is a process that we cannot increase our rates until it is approved by the Public Service Commission, unlike our other two utilities. Moving on to sanitary sewer or sanitary treatment, you guys may recall, there was a presentation done at the last village board meeting, is done by Green Bay Met, which is commonly referred to sometimes as New Water. They are forecasting a 7% increase just on their general operations and a 30% increase on their capital charges. So that's just a carry-on from the presentation that they had last month. This utility is not regulated by the Public Service Commission. I do want to touch that the expenses for this utility have been in excess of the revenues, looking back as far as six years. So even though we increased our rates last year, it did bring that dollar amount down, kind of closed that gap, but even with our increase last year, it still was not enough to make sure that our expenses align with the revenues that are coming in. Then finally, our stormwater utility, established in 2012, first time rates were adjusted was last year. That was a very hefty increase. Reason for that is we do have a lot of upcoming large infrastructure costs that are coming up, those including four sets of large box culverts throughout our industrial park, construction of some stormwater ponds. Then in 2027, we'll be working into some road reconstruct projects that have large stormwater pipes. Infrastructure's aging. Due to that, you know, we do have these considerable capital investments. So with that being said, I do have an attached document. I knew, I know that Jay does always request that. You can see the utility rate alternatives. So in there, that is only representative of an average residential user. So commercial industrials are going to be grossly different. That user using approximately 15,000 gallons of water per quarter. What you can see on the far left, there is a table. In, on that table, it shows what an average bill could be for an Ashwabanan resident, approximately $255 per quarter, which is generally, when you look at an average across all households, it's pretty normal, we'll say. Alternative one, which is the table that's in the center, shows that simplified rate case adjustment of 3%, sewer adjustment of 9%, and a stormwater adjustment of 10%. You can see that bumps it up to $271 per quarter, so about a $17 increase. The last alternative, which is one that I would recommend, is a 3% on water, 20% on sewer, and 10% on storm. Reason for that is, what that allows for is a greater increase in sewer. Reason, reason for that is it closes that gap in between. Reason for that is it closes that gap in between our expenses and revenues for that utility. You can see that is approximately another, we'll say, $14 jump. So, you do go from 255 all the way up to 285, so $30 per quarter. It is a large dollar amount, especially for those on fixed incomes. However, it does put us in a position where we are staying more fiscally responsible. With that, I'll open it up to any questions. I, I would recommend, if a motion is made, that we do state in the motion for resolution R325, what percentage for the sanitary utility?
Alternative? Okay.
Yep, yep, whether it's alternative one or alternative two. With that, I'll open it up to any questions that you guys might have.
Well, first, thank you, Brian. For, I, yeah, I like this breakdown, because then it allows us to understand, all right, it's $30 a quarter, it's going to be $120 a year.
Yep.
People, bills are going to go up. A lot, unfortunately, a lot of this is, is almost pass-through. It's not like we're in control of any of it. It's just, you know, pass-through, so unfortunately, I don't see any way of us being able to control it any more than what we already have.
Right. So. Yeah, I mean, a, a good example, that our sanitary utility alone, budget's about 8 million. Of that 8 million, 6.4 of it just goes to new water for treatment. So, it does, you know, with the, the remaining 1.6 million that's left, we're paying wages, we're doing all the repairs, all of our televising, stuff like that. So, they're, you know, the, the vast majority of that budget is just a pass-through, unfortunately, and it's, I don't want to say out of our control. We do, we can somewhat control it, but not as much as we can control it, so.
So, having said that, I'll, I'll make the motion to adopt resolution R11-2-25, R11-3-25, and R11-4-25 with alternative three.
Two. So, there's only two alternatives.
Okay, two, sorry. There was three on a page.
Yes, two on the page. Yep, yep.
Which increases water and sanitary sewer and stormwater rates.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R11-2-25, R11-3-25, and R11-4-25, with R11-3-25 going with alternate number two. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine C, consider, discuss, act on resolution R11-5-25, adopting the Village of Ashwabhanan 2026 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R11-5-25, adopting the 2026 budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution R11-5-25. Any other discussion? Hearing none.
Just a big thank you to the staff and everybody for all, all the hard work and everything that went into this. No, it's not easy to be cutting that and that, and, and Greg, great job pulling it all together.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one more thank you that we haven't passed along. I don't think, I know all the department heads, great, but I wanted to also publicly thank Sheri Hallson, who's Assistant Finance Director for her role this year with the CIP and, and the vehicles. And also, on the last minute, Sarah Zamboni helping me with some of the, some of the graphics and pictures at the end in the final budget book. If you haven't seen it, it's on our webpage. In fact, a nice photo of all of you is in there, too, just in case you didn't catch that. So, take a look at it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the village budget for 2026, R11-5-25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Nine D, consider, discuss, act on resolution R11-6-25, updating the village fee schedule.
Thank you, Madam President. So, under Wisconsin State statutes, fees charged by the village must have a reasonable relationship to the direct costs that are associated with the services or activities undertaken or that are related to that fee. The fee schedule that is in your packet today is, is, has no formal material changes to it from previous fee schedules. There are two minor adjustments where individual fees were listed twice. The duplicate fee has been removed, and that is the only material change to the entire fee schedule.
All right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution R11-6-25, updating the village fee schedules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R11-6-25. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 10, other items of business. Ten A, consider, discuss, act on the 2026 Bellin On-Site Services Agreement. Joel?
Thank you, Madam President. Attached is the amended services agreement between the village and Bellin Health, or Amplify, which discusses the scope of services offered for our onsite A-plus clinic here at Village Hall and in partnership with the school district at, at the high school. The scope of services remain the same, however, just like everything else, provider rates are increasing, and so there's an increased cost in the provider rates that are given. So, the contract is included in your packet, as well as the 2026 price analysis between the last five years of services and provider rates that are provided by Bellin. We do see a substantial cost savings by having an onsite clinic here, whether it be through Bellin or a different provider. And, and so even though the rates are increasing, it is substantially less than if an employee were to see some other primary care provider at another outside clinic or off-site clinic provider. So, there is substantial cost savings that we review annually with not only Bellin, but as part of our overall health insurance program, and that information is included in those premium equivalents that we review every year in October. So, staff is recommending approval of the contract amendments as being proposed, and I will take any questions that you may have.
Joel, I was just wondering, we've worked with Bellin forever, and they've been good and done a nice job for us over the years, but have we ever gone out and looked at other services to do the same type of thing?
Yeah, my understanding is prior to Bellin, the village, I believe, contracted with Purvea and had a clinic through Purvea, but that dates back to 2016, I want to say. So, a little bit before my time, but 2016 was the last time that the village has gone out and looked at other providers.
Joel, how many hours a week can I say that they put in here?
Ooh, that's a good question, Gary. I can get back to the group. I do have a formal number, I just don't have it right at my fingertips at this point, but I can certainly give you the amount of time that is available for, for appointments and the amount of time that is actually scheduled. It's about 80%, I, I believe, of the, the actual clinic hours that are available, available to employees is booked. So, we're at a point where, we're at that threshold where we may need to consider adding additional hours or an additional provider to our program in order to accommodate the schedule. Right now, it's becoming more and more challenging for employees or planned participants to find available time with the provider that they need within a reasonable amount of time. So, it's a, it's a widely-used benefit that does save the village and the school district a considerable amount of money in our health insurance program.
So, the school system comes here for that, then? Or do they have?
I believe they share some clinic hours, so there are district employees that will come to Village Hall for available office hours with, with the provider, but we have an agreement where we actually, our employees can go and see the clinic at the high school as well. Now, there's a clinic at one of the middle school, at the middle school, I believe, at the high school only. Is there no clinic at one of the elementary schools? Okay. So, the district employees can just attend the clinic at the high school, and then they share some hours here at Village Hall. There's a, a really good partnership and, and coordination between the district, Bellin, and the village to provide the clinic.
Okay. Because I know I come in here once in a while, and I see them there, and then I'm here again, and there's nobody here. I was wondering what kind of a shift or hours they have, so.
Yeah, if they're not, if they're not physically here, they're generally going to be at the high school then, so they share hours. So, sometimes they're in the mornings here, and then the afternoons at the high school. Other days, they're here in the afternoons and in the mornings at the high school.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no other questions, I'll move to, or to approve the Bellin On-Site Service Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2026 Bellin On-Site Services Agreement. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Any items for next agenda? If anybody has anything, give the office a call. Number 12, convene into closed session. During the meeting, the Village Board of the Village of Ashwabhanan may convene into closed session pursuant to a Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, par. 1, par. 1, for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Land acquisition. Need a motion to go into closed session.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Service.
Yes.
And Trustee Fluky.
Yes.
Okay, we'll be going into closed session.